Meeting of the Clive City Council, where the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Sorexina.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Nice to have everybody accounted for and welcome everyone as we come back to resuming our meetings virtually now in light of COVID-19. Very pleased though to have young person Klein here along with Dad, Councilmember Klein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Carson, give us a couple of words about yourself. Tell us where you're at in school and where you're at in scouting now.
I go to St. Tracy's Catholic School for the Taw Jesus. I'm in seventh grade. Well, I'm going in seventh grade. I'm in second class right now, working on my first class.
Outstanding, young man. Well, if you'd be so kind to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am.
You're gonna, you're gonna do this and you're gonna be the only one that says it, okay? So we can keep our audio quality good, okay? So you start when you're ready.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well said, young man. Thank you. If you're not careful, we might have you come back and do that again. Thank you, Carson.
You're welcome.
Good job.
All right. Always, always glad to have our young scouts come lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. What a, what a blessing. So thank you again. All right. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Okay, next item is citizens' presentation. This is where anyone joining us on the call has, would like to address the council on an item that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do that? If there is, please raise your hand to Pete and he'll, he'll bring you in.
One moment, Mayor. And post a couple of ways to catch my attention. One, I just sent everybody a chat. You can chat back at me if you would like to do some, like to speak at the appropriate time and be recognized by the mayor. You can also raise your hand by clicking on the participant icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And in that space, unless you've been set up as a co-host, you should have a little raise hand icon. Press that and I'll watch the word on my side. Mayor, I don't see any hands or any chats.
Seeing and hearing none of citizens' presentations, we're gonna move to consent items.
Move to resolution.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Okay. The next item, we have, well, really, we have two presentations now. The first is regarding a letter of appreciation to, to one of our residents, Will Smith, and I think Mike, you're gonna lead us on that.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, it's my pleasure. I wanted to publicly recognize Clive resident, Mr. Will Smith, for some actions he took to assist someone who was being, the victim of human trafficking. And I sent Will this letter this week. I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but even if he's not, I'd like to read this letter into the record. We always love to recognize when our citizens do great things. So, "Dear Will, on March 8, 2020, you were working at the front desk of the Super 8 Hotel in Clive. That evening, you saw a man enter the hotel that you did not recognize. Feeling that something wasn't right, you watched him on your security cameras. You saw him go to room 216, which was registered to a single female. He came out a short time later and exited out the rear of the hotel. At the same time, you saw a different man enter the hotel through the front lobby that you also did not recognize. You watched that man on security cameras and saw him also go to room 216. After a short time, you watched that first male go back to room 216 and enter the room. Next, you saw two men exit the room and begin to argue in the hallway. You went there and intervened in the argument and called Clive Police. When the police arrived, you pointed out the woman to the officers in the parking lot. She was not making herself known to police. Officers made contact with her. She was initially uncooperative, but was moved to a safe location where she eventually told investigators that she was being trafficked by the first male and wanted help. Follow-up investigation showed that the young woman was a University of Iowa student. She had first met the man in Iowa City. Since their meeting, he groomed her by the use of drugs and coercion until he eventually started trafficking, trafficking her for prostitution around the state. She said that she had gotten into a situation where she felt she had no other option but to do as he said. The information in this investigation was turned over to a state and federal human trafficking task force who had the resources to complete this investigation and possibly locate additional victims of this trafficker. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize your diligence and your concern for your fellow human beings. Your actions made the difference in the life of that young woman and may lead to assisting others as well. Both you and your employer should be proud of how you handled this difficult situation. I commend you for your actions. Sincerely yours." Your Honor, I don't know if Will is in the room. If he, if he is, I would, if he could make himself known, I'd like to give him a chance to say a couple of words.
Absolutely. Well, if you're with us, please signal to Pete and we would love to hear from you if you're with us.
Well, if you're there, you can do that using the chat function or click on the participant icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen and then you'll see us, a button that you can press to raise your hand.
If not, Your Honor, I thank you for the opportunity to bring Will's actions in front of the council and was glad to be able to read it into the record.
Pete, thank you. And Will Smith, thank you. You know, what bravery to, to go against the internal brain and become involved and intervene in something that's so atrocious and so violating and so damaging. Hard to believe it goes on right here in our community. But thank you for your actions and your difference. I promise it will make a difference in a lot of people's lives, the actions that you took. So we're grateful and hopefully at some point, we'll be able to recognize you in person as you so deserve. Pete, thank you again. The next item is a process improvement from the Department of Administrative Services. And Joyce, you're gonna lead this for us.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This year for the Admin Services Department, our process improvement involved a collaboration between our department as well as the Community Development Department. So I will turn it over to Barb Kelderman. She's our utility billing clerk in our department. And Kelly Rivera, who is the Administrative Assistant in the Comm. Dev. Department. And I'll let them tell you all about it.
Barb and Kelly, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us about what you're up to here?
Can you hear me? This, this is Kelly.
Hi, Kelly. I can hear you.
Great. So obviously, I'm from the Community Development Department. Prior to January 1st of this year, the building department had entries on our building permit for both the construction water and a meter deposit for any new construction. So we would collect the $25 for the, for residential water and 100 for, for commercial. Additionally, we would do the $50 meter fee when the contractor paid for the building permit. So once we got that money, I would do a work order and send it on to Barb. And then they do the rest of the work. So that's all I get to talk about.
Okay. Can you hear me? This is Barb.
Sure, Barb. We can hear you.
All right. Thank you, Kelly, and thanks, Mayor and Council, for your time tonight. So Kelly talked a bit about the water fee that she collects with the building permit. That recoups money in advance for the waters that is gonna be used for the project's life prior to the meter going into the project. Once the meter is installed, the contractor is billed for, you know, the actual water and it's measured. And there are some other flat fees that they pay with that. The meter deposit that Kelly had collected is used for a construction project, just like any home or business. It's a safety measure to ensure that we're paid if somebody decides not to pay their water bill. For construction projects, however, the construction water fee that Kelly talked about actually pays for the majority of the water that is used on the project. Once the meter is installed and the contractor has to pay for the actual water that is used, this project is already very close to completion and basically they are just using this water for cleaning and stuff like that. So, once the new owner has the water bill changed to their name, the water department gets a final reading and in most of the cases, a check request has to be submitted to return to the contractor for what remains of their deposit that they paid. The accounts payable department noticed how much time was being spent refunding these deposits and requested an alternate procedure. It was determined that bypassing the water deposit fee collection on the building permit would save a lot of time and money. It's rare that a contractor owes money upon the final reading and when they do, they always pay. However, there is a problem. We can turn to the Community Development Department and they can stop inspections or halt any other projects that the contractor might be on in the city until this situation is cleared up.
Well, Barb, that sounds fantastic. And gee, I want you on my side. Maybe I need to have you come audit some of my processes and maybe even straighten me out a little bit. Counsel, do you have questions for Barb or Kelly? Well, seeing no questions, ladies, thank you again. I'm always quick to remind the group and I know it gets old. But I remember when we first started this process and I, I'm grateful to see how far we've come, to see our teams taking ownership of their departments, their jobs, and really finding ways to do things better because they know how to do it best. So thank you very much and we'll look forward to the next one. Thanks, Barb and Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move to action items now. The first item is a public hearing regarding the 2020 Residential HMA Rehabilitation Project. And Matthew, was appropriate public notice posted?
Yes, Your Honor, it was. It was posted July 8th, 2020 in the Des Moines Register.
Thank you, Matthew. Jim, I think you're leading this one.
Jim, you should be set up as co-host and be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor. Received bids last Thursday afternoon on this year's asphalt overlay project. The map that's up that was included in your packet identifies the project area, east of Indian Hills Junior High, on 90th Street, 90th Court, 91st Street. Also noted there on is a bid alternate. The base bid are all those streets then north of Indian Hills Drive. The alternate are those streets then south with the hope being that based on bids received, we'd be able to award the, the base bid plus the alternate. We did receive three bids. We're used to getting bids from, at least, at least two from Grimes Asphalt and Des Moines Asphalt. Inroads is a relatively new contractor that is making a presence in the metro. And we're glad that they bid and we're hopeful that we'll be able to receive three bids on projects like this in the future. More competition is always better. You also probably noticed there was a pretty large disparity between the low and the high bids there. As always, I think that's mainly indicative of workload, especially now, later in the year. I think it's pretty apparent that Des Moines Asphalt has a little more backlog than, than Grimes. But we're happy with all three bids received. There is a late start date in August of this year and 50 working days assigned that will allow for completion of the project yet this year. With that, I'd recommend award of the base bid and the alternate to Grimes Asphalt and Paving for the listed amount of $689,144. You have to answer any questions.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to present on this item?
Mayor, I don't see any hands going up and I've not received a chat.
Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move to resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero.
Move to receive the bids.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That item passes five to zero.
Move the resolution awarding the contract to Grimes Asphalt and Paving in the amount of $689,144.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that item passes five to zero. Thank you, Jim. Okay, we'll move to the second public hearing item now. This is regarding the vacation of water main easement at Country Club West, Plat 17 Lot 2. And Matthew, did we post appropriate public notice?
Yes, Your Honor, that was published in the Des Moines Register as well on July 8th, 2020.
Thank you, Matthew. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So as you said, we are looking at partially vacating part of the public water main easement on that Country Club West 17 Plat 2. You guys might be more familiar with that as the Come and Go property that is currently under construction. That water main was installed with the TIF agreements and everything Nebraska Furniture Mart did. And when they subdivided to create that outlot, they ran the water service. When Come and Go purchased that and brought it forward their building plans, you can see a part of that water main here is under the building improvements. It falls in that area. So it's just simply vacating the portion down a little further to where their service line would need to come in, where that eight-inch water comes off and goes west. So that is the portion we're vacating here. We, I think, discussed this more thoroughly with the preliminary plat. We had hoped to bring this forward at the same time as the final plat, but we are still waiting on some legal documents from Come and Go's team. So since this public hearing was already advertised, we wanted to go ahead and move forward with vacating the easement. And you will be seeing the final plat to actually create the Come and Go lot and the future outlot to the south as a second outlot that would be developable at one of your future meetings.
Progress is being made. Thank you, Amanda.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero.
Move the resolution approving vacation of the water main easement.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, action item number three is a resolution encouraging COVID-19 public health practices in Clive. Lot of background here, but Matt, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, the resolution before you tonight is one of education and encouragement in terms of good public health practices in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. As the council is aware, city facilities, when we were open to the public, did require face coverings for anybody entering our facility. This resolution looks to encourage that more broadly in the community. We know we have, we've had a number of businesses as well have similar requirements to try to limit the spread of COVID-19 in the Clive community. And this resolution before you tonight, just to kind of basically encourages that on a broader basis. If the council were to approve this resolution tonight, Assistant City Manager DeCook and I have been talking a little bit about ways that the city can just promote face mask usage more broadly. We've been doing so with our, our Green Belt Goat masks. And I'll kind of let Pete talk a little bit more about some things that we can do going forward, pending your approval of this resolution. Pete?
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, we've got a host of things that we can wrap up together. Some of them are already in motion. We've been promoting this as a common sense and easy public health measure in our newsletter for multiple months now. We're also added to our Bankers Trust sign that we, on the crawl that's at the bottom of that sign. We're also looking forward to our first check presentation that will need to provide community services from the sale of our Green Belt Goat Mask signs, the actual mask and the gray t-shirts as well. That'll be about $1,000. We look forward to doing that in the next couple of weeks. Also, we know this is probably gonna be a long haul and so we are well stocked with not only all our communications assets, but then also some of those things that can keep building community morale, like the shirts and the masks. And we'll continue to monitor supplies so that as the community wants to continue to participate with us, we're ready to help them spread this important message about how we can get our economy and how we can get our schools and how we can get our social lives back on track if we all look out for each other and take some common sense measures like wearing masks.
Pete, thank you. Counsel, what I'd like to do now is just read the resolution and then ask for commentary and then if we could take action. Resolution encouraging COVID-19 public health practices in Clive. Whereas countries around the globe have experienced a COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic with over 15 million confirmed cases and 620,000 deaths. And whereas the United States has, has over 3.9 million cases and 142,000 deaths. Whereas Iowa has over 39,800 cases and 808 deaths. And whereas Polk and Dallas counties have over 10,160 cases and 223 deaths. And whereas the number of COVID-19 cases continue to increase in our nation, state, and counties, placing our residents at risk for serious illness or death. And whereas the World Health Organization is determined that wearing face shields or cloth face masks has proven to be one of the most effective means to curb the spread of COVID-19 virus among persons in public settings. And whereas it is critically important to protect the residents, visitors, students, employees in the cities, the city of Clive for the spread of COVID-19. And whereas the city of Clive desires that individuals in the city comply with the recommended practices to reduce the virus spread, including social distancing and the use of face shield or cloth face masks. Whereas the city of Clive encourages businesses throughout Clive to explore similar measures as a way to reduce the spread of COVID-19 and help keep businesses operational. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Clive, Iowa, that the city encourages everyone to social distance and wear face shields or cloth masks when they're in proximity of other persons, both in public as well as in private locations. And that these practices continue until substantial progress in curbing the spread of COVID-19 virus has been declared by public health officials. That would be passed and approved this 23rd day of July, 2020. And with council action, it would be my pleasure to sign this resolution. Counsel, questions or comments?
Move the resolution.
Counselman and Mayor, there is a citizen who would like to speak on this item.
Welcome. Please. It's moved by John, seconded by Michael. And so further discussion, we have, we have a resident here that has requested to speak on this item. So if you'd come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Diane Bell, you should be able to unmute yourself. You should, you are unmuted. Go ahead and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not able to start the video. It says that the host has me not able to see, you know. So I'm not sure. But I was on earlier, but it's not allowing me because, oh, here we go. Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm Diane Abel and my address is 15204 in Clive. I have, at Wildwood Drive in Clive. I have lived in the city for about eight years and love the city, love the neighborhoods, very happy with what has been occurring as far as progress in the city. I'm here to urge you to take whatever action possible in order to mandate masks in the city of Clive for citizens. The resolution before you, encouraging everyone to wear masks, seems to be the same message that the governor and the Iowa Department of Health have been giving us for many, many months. The points in the resolution, the extremely concerning statistics and the need for masks and social distancing are factual information about the public health emergency. While I truly appreciate you encouraging Clive citizens to wear masks, I don't understand how this is any different than what we've been hearing from the governor and from the state. The Des Moines Register poll a month ago, among residents of Iowa cities, 65% say they wear masks almost all the time or most of the time, and 46% of rural residents say that. Clearly, we need to do better. Almost all health officials and scientists agree that if most wear masks, the spread of COVID-19 would be dramatically reduced. I've seen estimates that we need to get to 80 to 90% of people wearing masks in order to get the virus under control. In order to save lives, help prevent people from becoming sick and becoming hospitalized, we need to mandate masks. If you want to look at the economic side of this, the impact, I can't imagine the public health cost we will incur as we deal with the treatment and the long-term impact of COVID-19. We just need to get the virus under control from the humane perspective as well as the economic perspective. There are only two states, South Dakota and Iowa, that have no mask requirements at all. Mixed messages have caused confusion, desensitization, and disregard of the mask message, I'm afraid. This has become a political debate and it's just not a political issue. It's a public health emergency. And I know there are loud voices and you're hearing them as far as reasons that people don't want to wear a mask. But there's also many of us that do support a mask mandate. As I said earlier, almost all the health officials agree that wearing a mask dramatically reduces the spread. Some say it takes about two weeks of most of us wearing a mask for the virus to go down. Some say it takes four weeks. But whichever two or four weeks, everyone seems to agree on the health side that this is the way of reducing the spread by wearing masks. I have several elderly friends in the city who have had COVID over the last month to two months. And thank goodness they've recovered, although they, they have long-term effects from the neurological impact of it. Just this afternoon, unfortunately, one of my friends lost her husband. This is here in the city. He'd been in the hospital for three weeks and just died this afternoon after a second heart attack. It's just very, very sad what is happening all around us. I just asked you, however hard and difficult this is, to please figure out whatever the necessary action might be for you to take steps to mandate masks here in, in Clive for citizens. I had sent you the email about a week or so ago. A state legislator in Dubuque recommended to me that we can do something in the cities. Whether this, you know, is just his opinion, but what he said was that if the city officials would ask the governor for the authority to make a mass mandate, and if it came from several cities, if it came from different directions, that he just felt like the governor would agree that you could have the local authority to do so. Now maybe this is way above me. Maybe there are other ways or other options. Or maybe there are very, very few. I'm not sure. But I'm just asking you to, to stand up and, and what you're doing would be saving lives. There's, it's a direct route to saving lives if we have a mass mandate. And I just urge you to try to figure out the right action and then take that action. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane, for your comments. I know that we've had multiple email exchanges and, and discussion about this, about this topic. And so I appreciate your comments. You know, council staff, questions, comments at this point?
I have a comment, Your Honor.
Right, Susan.
I'd just like to say that I really appreciate Diane Abel's comments. And I agree with everything she said, that it is going to take a mandate, I believe, for real a commendation to, to happen with achieving the 80 to 90% participation of mask wearing. Multiple times in recent months, I've participated in phone calls that were hosted by the Greater Des Moines Partnership for their investors in which the leaders from both Mercy One and Unity Point spoke up. And they urged that everyone needed to be wearing a mask, distancing, washing their hands. And they urged that every single parent needed to be teaching their children, no matter the age, to wear masks prior to returning to school. That those were the only tools we have right now to reduce transmission between people. So I just really urge us to take seriously any opportunity we have to move toward a mandate, whether that is requesting it of the governor. But for tonight, I'm very glad that we are taking a first step in making it a strong recommendation. The only disagreement I have with the resolution is asking businesses to explore because we know what they need to do. We should be asking them to implement, not to explore, in my view. But those are my comments for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Judkins. Other council members, comments, questions at this point?
There is another resident who would like to make a comment.
Okay, please come forward to state your name and address for the record.
One moment. Julie, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you.
Okay, super. Hi, I'm Julie Nies, and my address is 2230 Northwest 138th Street. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I don't want to repeat anything that Diane has said or Susan, but you know, we had a shelter-in-place order to flatten the curve, and now we don't. We now have choices, and the virus numbers are rising as businesses open and people are moving around in public places. We know that the mask helps from spreading the invisible COVID-19 virus. And we have a choice to keep our economy rising by wearing a mask. It is an economic choice to wear a mask in public places to keep the virus numbers low and our citizens safe. You know, this isn't any different than secondhand smoke. Nobody can smoke in public because it hurts others. This is a time to be taking care of each other, and I think leadership needs at the grassroots level to take a stand and do the right thing right now. So I'm considering, I'm, I'm asking you to consider to make face masks mandatory to protect our citizens in Clive and those who visit our communities. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate your comments as well. Once again, counsel, any other questions or commentary as it relates to this resolution this evening?
Well, just to clarify, Susan, are you asking to change this to a mandate tonight?
I am asking that the city pursue any opportunity to move to a mandate. I don't think we have legal guidance that tells us that we have the ability to do that right now, although I do understand that the city of Iowa City has found that as long as it's for a public health emergency that we mind. But my assumption is that we don't have the legal backing, but perhaps legal counsel who's on the phone would have some information about that. I mean, if I knew we had the legal backing, I would be asking for it.
So you're just, you're just stating, I think what we all, I mean, we understand, but that we go ahead tonight with this resolution and look at if the governor will allow us or anything else. You're not asking for a mandate in this vote.
No, I'm not. Unless legal counsel would tell us that we have legal authority to ask for that, I, I would recommend it.
I just add some, some observation. I, I think, Susan, what you referenced was the, the whereas line is it, is it encouraged businesses to examine measures as well? I think your indication was that they know what to do. We should be telling them what to do or mandating what they do and, and.
Yeah, I, I just didn't like the reference to exploring it. I think we should tell them, businesses should be looking at the guidance from the World Health Organization and the CDC and implementing a mask requirement.
Right. The, and again, that's a mandate. As far as I know, and legal counsel is here, I've got a couple of points to make here. As far as I know, we do not have the ability from the state to issue a mandate. I understand Iowa City has. I understand that Muscatine has, and there may be another one. And I think that, that is to be determined, you know, what action, if any, is, is taken by the state on that. So we don't have the ability to issue a mandate, at least at this point in time. That comes from the governor's office. So, you know, our effort this evening is to strongly encourage, I think, and I think this, this resolution does strongly encourage everyone, whether it's our residents or visitors, or visitors or students or businesses, to do the right things that we know the public health, health officials at the county and state level are sharing with us. So I think that, I think that we're doing that. I know another comment was made earlier, we did not have a lockdown situation. We did not have a permanent stay-at-home order issued by the governor in the first wave of the pandemic. We were very close to that, but that did not actually happen. So I want the record to be straight on that point. But again, I think, I think what we all want is is to do what we can to share the right message with our residents and our businesses about the practices that will keep everybody healthier and safer as much as we possibly can. And I think, I think everybody's to be commended for, for that. I think, I think we're all on the same page there. We'll have to continue to work on details later. Now, Christina, you're here, legal counsel. You know, if, looking for confirmation on, on the mandate capability at a local level.
Your Honor, this is Leslie Bohanik. I'm actually attending in Christina Stanger's place.
Hi, Leslie.
Hi there. Thank you for having me.
Yes.
The issue of whether the city of Clive or any other municipality in Iowa, whether there's authority to mandate wearing masks is not entirely clear. I know that some cities have taken the stance that they believe they do have the power. Under Iowa law, obviously, the governor has taken a different approach. There's a doctrine called preemption. There's three different types of preemption. I won't go into a whole lot of detail about all of the legalese there, but in short, it, it is not entirely clear whether an ordinance requiring the wearing of face masks in public places within the city of Clive is preempted. So, you know, the city would be taking a step in this situation where the, where it's just not clear whether such an action would be preempted by state law or not.
Leslie, thank you. And I think that if it's not clear, my suggestion is, is that we determine what is clear. We're, we're taking a step this evening, as others have mentioned, to share the right message. And I, I think we need to know and understand what our capabilities are. I think we, we've tried very, we've made real efforts not to get out ahead of our county and state health officials and the governor's offices that relates to handling this pandemic. And there's a reason for that. Because mixed messages and mixed approaches tend not to do very well. So I think we've tried to manage, to manage accordingly. But if something isn't clear, we need to find out why it's not clear and have a better basis of understanding, not just for us, but for our residents and for our visitors and everyone else that comes to Clive. So if you would help us in that regard, I would appreciate it. But at this point, great discussion. I'm going to ask for a resolution to pass this resolution and that we can continue on in our efforts.
I swear, I think we, we already have. I think we've got a motion in a second.
They're moved in a second. And thank, thank you, Councilmember Edwards. Lot of discussion here, so I've got a little sidetracked. Say no further discussion with the council, please vote. And that passes five to zero. Thanks all for your efforts here and for the discussion with our residents. And we'll continue our, our joint efforts on keeping all of us safer and healthier. All right, we're going to move to discussion items now. The first item is a 2020 Clive Resident Survey, and Pete, you've got this covered.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to pull up my screen here for a moment. Tonight, Your Honor, we're happy to present the results of the 2020 Resident Survey. We're going to use the memo that was in your packet to organize the start of our discussion, but obviously, there's a lot of information in the survey, and we are happy to cover any of those pieces that you would like. This is something we do once every two years, and as you can see here in the bullet points, we have got a long list of the reasons why. I think you'll see in the course for our discussion tonight, one thing that is really apparent is that it gives us a sense of long-term priorities and strategic planning opportunities as well, because we see trends over time. This is the fifth time that we've done the survey, so we've got an excellent trend line that we can see now in a minute, in a number of areas that give us some direction or give the council some information that they can use to set an event direction for the city as you all see fit. We were in the field as the pandemic was expanding in North America and certainly in Iowa. Residents were filling out the survey through the second half of March and into April, and we were taking some online responses all the way up into the, just about the first week of May. Despite that, the analyst from the, our partner agency on this, the NCR, excuse me, the NRC Polco, believed that we don't have anything that adversely affected responses. They do, though, identify a couple of places where they think the COVID-19 pandemic really shaped the opinions of residents, and so probably reflects their opinions in this unique snapshot as opposed to their opinions formed over just the larger two-year period since we last were surveying them. If there aren't any questions right now about our methodology, excuse me, one last point, Mayor. One thing that is very important about this as well is we're not talking with all of these surveys about a huge number of households compared to all the households in Clive. It pushed up north of 500 respondents, and they came from all across the city. And that does represent a response rate of over 30%, which is very strong. On top of that, though, to make sure that there's good representation across the different housing situations and races and ethnicities and sexes and age, ages, planning districts throughout the city, they do wait responses so that we don't over-index on one particular demographic group. So we can look at this with a, with a, some confidence that even though we didn't get actual responses that line up perfectly with the demographics of the city, the responses in the data has been weighted so that we can look at this and with a degree of confidence that it reflects the variety of opinions that we would expect to see throughout Clive. So we're going to go straight into the headlines. And please stop me as you, as you get to one that you'd like to discuss further. The big headline, the, the overwhelming neon light headline on all of this is that the trend line showed that livability in Clive and residents' trust in this government is extremely high and has been high now for many, many years. I call out this quote, which was also a quote that we feature in the mayor's newsletter that'll be going out with utility bills at the beginning of August. But this bold area here that Clive ranked number one out of hundreds of other jurisdictions nationwide for the job that our government does, but being honest, open and transparent, informing residents about issues facing their community and treating residents with respect. You know, I know you've heard Matt say it many times. I've heard my colleagues say it many times. I've heard all of you say it many times, that the currency, the, the basis of what this government is able to do is trust. Trust that is earned and trust that is continuing, continuously respected by staff and by the council as well, the trust of residents. And I couldn't think of a, a more strong statement than this from those analysts about the very high degree of trust that residents have right now and the work that all of you do and the work that we do together as a city team. Second headline. Our law enforcement and safety continue to receive very, very high marks. And it is a priority area for the residents of Clive as well. Not surprising. It's consistently been identified by residents among many high priorities. This is one that they always put near the top of the list. The interesting point is that we see a little bit of demographic split when we're talking about public safety, and I, and I pulled out this chart right here to explain some of that. This is from our demographic report here. And you can see that among younger folks in Clive, there are some spaces where they are, excuse me, I, I spoke, what you, we're looking not at the, the demographic group by, by age. We're looking at demographic group by, by planning district. You can see that, for example, with property crime, this line right here, that all of this is very, very high. But we see that these answers here for planning districts, B, C, and D. So B is Planning District Three by itself. C is Four and Five together, and D is Six and Seven together. That there is a statistically significant difference between the way residents in the first planning district feel about property crime versus other neighborhoods in Clive. Again, we don't want to look at this and see that we've got a glaring problem. But as I talked to the chief about this, he reported that it does sort of line up with where we are seeing more incidents of property crime compared to other neighborhoods. It's slightly higher here in the first planning district than in these areas. So the data here, as reported by residents, seems to align with what we are seeing with our other data sets as well. This could be the type of thing that we look at and think, is this an early indicator potentially of something that represents a larger trend? of something that represents a larger trend that we want to pay close attention to now? The next headline has to do with the overall quality of the transportation system. This is one where I think we really see the value of doing the survey once every two years. We have data here showing in, in, it may be a bit of a lagging indicator, or we may just have the very strong signal this year of something that we've seen in previous years. The residents' opinion across the entire city, more or less, of the quality of the transportation system in Clive took a, a big hit in 2018 heading to 2020. But this is something that this council has discussed at length, looking at other data about road conditions, listening to residents about parts of the city where we have crumbling concrete streets. This is something where the council has already been taking very, very strong action. Residents are now reporting that they're seeing, seeing some of that deterioration as well. As I looked at all of the questions that kind of boil up into this headline here about the overall quality of the transportation system, the one factor that really popped out was street repair. This is where we saw 54%, the actual number compared to last year on street repair. If you'll bear with me for just a moment. It went last year from a 68% residents rating, rating a good or excellent to 54% rating a good or excellent this year. What you see in this line is how that breaks up by planning district. Planning District Six and Seven, where we have relatively new streets still, you can see that they are statistically significantly higher, rated higher than what we see in all of the other areas of the city. What's also striking to me is that even though here in Planning District Four or Five, we have some relatively new concrete. We know for many reasons that that concrete, uh, has been failing and, and at a hard rate, a difficult rate. And obviously here in Planning Districts One, Two, and Three, where you have some older concretes and older street infrastructure, you see that they also have a sub 50% approval, a good, excellent rating for street repair. So again, not new information, but definitely a very strong signal with this survey data about how residents feel about street repair and about the quality of the streets. An affirmation in many ways of the strong, of the, of the action that the council has already taken to really prioritize spending and improving this infrastructure. Are there questions about streets at this point? And about this data point? I'm going to go back here to the, I'm having a hard time there seeing all the hands that go up as, as I'm presenting. Uh, maybe I can make a way through the rest of this and then stop sharing my screen. Or Matt, maybe you can help me watch for some hands that might go up as well. Right. Hearing no questions from the council, I'll continue. The last, uh, the next headline to call out is, last year we talked about a, what we perceived to be a, a split in attitudes between the east, neighborhoods east of the interstate and neighborhoods west of the interstate. And we saw that persist. It's not a massive deviation between the way the neighborhoods east and west feel about the performance of the city or the built infrastructure or trust, but there are some uh, signals that I think behoove us to pay careful attention to. So on core things like being honest, treating residents fairly, treating residents with respect and overall quality of new development, that's an area where we saw statistically significant difference between four, five, six, and seven and one, two, and three. But as I mentioned before, the overwhelming sentiment is still very positive. One other area where we saw a demographic trend that's important to pay attention to was with younger folks. And we saw a little bit of this last year, but it really came through this year. When I looked at the demographic data, the area where I most consistently saw markers that we had statistically significant difference was with age. And it was consistently our youngest cohort of 18 to 35-year-olds reporting somewhat less favorable rankings or, or metrics than somewhat older cohort, age cohorts in Clive. It was a diverse set of issues and that leads me to think that it's not necessarily something specific about an area of the built environment or a specific area of performance for the city, but actually might be a bigger generational kind of attitudinal shift that we see here between younger folks and older folks. Um, I did call out the internet number here because it was, again, one of our very lowest marks from any, from any group. Only 48% of 18 to 35-year-olds in Clive thought that high-speed internet services were good or excellent in the city at this point. Headline number six is specifically about confidence in the economic, uh, confidence in the economy and where it's going to be heading. We saw a very pessimistic kind of response throughout the, the group. And you can see how it took a big dip here where the, when the people reported on whether the economy would have a positive impact on their income. Rising sentiment, rising sentiment all the way up until 2018, first four times you did the survey, and then cratering down to 19%. The, the analysts think that that had a lot to do with COVID. In, in some ways, sort of useful for us to see it, even though it's really driven by this unique moment as opposed to the broader two-year time span. Uh, because it does give us some sense as a city that residents may be looking to us as a, a very trusted government source to continue to focus on in our, in ways that we can on its helping the community get through this difficult economic time and the, and the broader pandemic. Final point I wanted to call out our, our unique area where we presented this year was, asked questions this year was about water resources. And we found that whether we were looking at neighborhoods and areas in the city that had a lot of flooding or had past water resources issues that had come up. In general, we just don't see a particular part of the city or any age group or any other demographic factor that gets us a sense that people are really aware of what's going on with water in Clive. A number of folks are doing some things when it comes to either the water inside their house or the water, how they manage the water outside their home. But most of those things have to do with normal home and yard maintenance. Things like air rating or keeping their plumbing system in good condition. When we asked about more specific things people could do to potentially decrease inside the house water use or manage the snow and rain that falls on their yard, people reported that they were not doing many of those practices. Our takeaway from that isn't necessarily though that people are opposed to doing those practices, but we see here is a very large knowledge deficit. And that really came through when we, with the last question we asked, which was, do you know which watershed you live in? And at that point, we would have taken any response. We didn't prescribe that people needed to say Walnut Creek. We would have taken Mississippi. But only 25% residents said that they knew what watershed they were in. So we've got a big lift ahead of us, especially going into future discussions with community leaders and members of the public about some of the big challenges that face the city, the big expenses that face the city when we're talking about water resources, infrastructure, and certainly talking about ways that we can all be better stewards of these, this precious resource that is water and the water that flows through this thing that we love very much, the, the pipe green. With that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Pete. A lot of information here. And I think of, of various aspects of, of your explanation just pointed the fact that we need to continue to invest in this instrument that, that gives us guidance and helps us make, uh, establish our priorities and, and carry them out. Uh, so thank you for your efforts. Uh, council, uh, questions, comments for Pete?
Pete, I'll start off with a quick question here regarding some of the marks with public transportation. Could you talk about, uh, some of those views and the ratings for public transportation? In addition, could you address, uh, the assistance applied to usage of public transportation? Because those seem to have been a bit off as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, so, so everybody is aware, I'm going to try and pull these, uh, this, this data up so we can all look at it together for a moment. Okay. So here we're looking at the livability report, which I would recommend if you haven't gone through them all yet, this is the easiest one to take a look at. Bus transit services over time now comparison to the benchmark for Clive looks about the same as it does to others. Now, this is a rating of sort of sentiment of ease or, or perceived, perceived good or excellent. The change here, about the same as what we've seen in the past. When you look though, at whether or not people have used bus, rail, subway, or other public transportation instead of driving, you can see that it's a very small percentage of Clive residents that have been using that. Now, if we look at the trends over time report, we get a little bit different perspective on that. The trend line for whether people have used the bus, rail, subway, or other public transportation instead of driving has gone from 6% up to 8%. So all of that is about what we've seen throughout the time. But when you look at people who report that they have carpool with other adults or children instead of driving alone, we see a growth in 2014 of 33% up to 37%. And that is that, that number, that increase has been pretty steady over the last three years that we've done the survey. And then walked or biked instead of driving, we've been consistent at 60% down to a low 53% in 2018, but back up to 64% now in 2020, which is now a high point for walked or bike since we've started doing the survey. So I don't see big moves, Councilman, in the way that people are choosing to get around, but we do see a slight uptick in some of those alternatives besides getting in a car and driving by yourself.
Uh, great question. Other questions or comments, council? Well, uh, hearing none. Pete, again, um, you know, this, uh, the survey continues to set the bar for us, uh, and be of great assistance to us. Always glad to see, uh, the positives that come out of it, but we've got to really pay attention to to, to what else comes out of it, the negatives and everything in between. And I think we do a good job of doing that. So uh, thanks for your effort in shepherding, uh, you, you know, this, this whole effort so we can understand it and apply it over time. Uh, great stuff for all of us. Um, again, thank you. Okay, we're going to move now to the second discussion item, which is financial update, COVID-19 impacts for fiscal year 19 and 20-year end and local option sales tax update map.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, the council will be very familiar with the format, um, the memo on your screen. Um, we've now updated it with, um, in July here with the year-end numbers for the fiscal year that just ended on, on June 30th, uh, 2020 here. So just going to walk through this, uh, briefly, um, really focus on the areas where we saw some change. Um, in terms of property tax revenue, just like we kind of predicted, um, back in June, that we're going to be on track. And in fact, that is definitely the case where we really don't see little to no, we saw a little to no impact in our property tax revenues as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, hotel motel tax, we did see an impact there, uh, both in the current year. And that, that's what we spoke to at the last, uh, the June meeting. Uh, we don't have any new information since then, but this one will be a key one for us to track as we head into this fiscal year. As I mentioned last time, this is always usually a quarter behind for the full impact. So that August payment uh, would be the one that we would probably see the, the most significant decline in revenue, um, as compared to previous, uh, Augusts. Um, for example, in 2019, that'll be a, a very, a good one for us to compare to in terms of the kind of full breadth of impact to our hotel years here in Clive in terms of occupancy. Uh, utility franchise fee, no new information here in terms of, uh, less revenue than expected. Now, this could, we kind of predict this was really more, uh, related to the lighter winter that we had in terms of the, the heating, um, uh, costs and the franchise fee that's applied to it, not necessarily something related directly to COVID-19. Uh, as we look at an overall summary for the general fund and, uh, and I'll also refer to the cash flows here in a minute. Um, the, the fiscal year, uh, ended very positively. Um, to the point where we were actually, we actually added to the cash reserves when we were, uh, projecting the potential of, um, utilizing some of those cash reserves. And that was more related to the decision that was made uh, last fall to continue another phase of the flood-prone property buyout program. And so we were expecting, um, at least at that time, somewhat of a use of cash reserves, uh, due to the, uh, good financial, uh, stewardship of, of the city and the, and the departments. Uh, our expenditures were much lower than anticipated. And so we are actually on, 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 on an unaudited basis. We do the audit here in September, October, but on just a cash and audited basis, we're anticipating about, uh, $52,000 addition to cash reserves in the general fund. Uh, based on the cash flow that we included. And then in the trust and agency fund, uh, we definitely had some addition to cash reserves. We saw a lot less expenses there. We didn't necessarily amend the expenses or the revenues in that, uh, particular fund here. Uh, this spring, we kind of went through our normal process on that. So, uh, very positive results for both our general fund and trust and agency fund. And I'll go back to that here in a minute when we get to the cash reserves or cash flow documents.
Hey, Matt, can you just, just make sure I'm, I'm reading this right? Uh, the general fund cash reserves that we had an overall net loss, is that right? Like a 200?
No, we didn't. We were projecting that la, in May. We actually ended the fiscal year on, in the positive, in the black.
Okay.
So we were, we were projecting potential of almost about a $300,000 use of cash reserves.
That's just a projection. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
That was just, that was a projection based on the amendment. So, um, and then what we actually ended up at was a $52,000 surplus. So the swing on that is mainly expenditures. So we were able to keep expenditures down. One of the things that we always kind of talk about during the budget process is we never spend 100% of our budget, right? We're always in that 96, 97%. And so when we actually close the books for the fiscal year, you get to realize that and see that. And the cash flow, it'll make a little bit more sense when I get to it in terms of you can kind of see the trend over time.
Thank you.
On the sales tax, uh, side, no, no information here. We haven't received any new information, at least that I'm aware of from the state in terms of they're still projecting a 4% year-over-year reduction in sales tax. Um, that's really within the margins for us in terms of overall, say, a local option sales tax revenue. Again, we will, um, uh, talk about sales tax quite a bit more here in a minute, um, with the last document that's in the packet. Road use tax, uh, no new, uh, updates on revenues per se, but we do have kind of what the cash flow looked like, looked like at the, after closing the books for this fiscal year, again, unaudited numbers. We did see a slight addition to cash reserves. We were projecting a, a more substantial loss in revenue, uh, in road use than what we ended up realizing. We ended up being about 95%. So, um, we made some, some changes in terms of transfers to kind of protect that fund even further. And so that put us in a positive position on that fund. So, so great news there as well. And we're still in a position to move forward a number of the, uh, street rehabilitation projects, uh, including one tonight, um, that you just recently just approved the contract for. On the utility side, um, just kind of giving a quick summary, um, we saw very good, uh, revenue collections and all those funds, again, unaudited at this point. And those you, uh, so really little to no impact on the utilities. And then, uh, as I just mentioned earlier, um, following your direction at the last time we had this discussion in June, uh, we're proceeding with rebidding the arterial, uh, PCC contract that where we rejected bids on that back in March due to only getting one bid and it being a very high bid. We are going, we say you set the public hearing tonight to rebid, uh, that street rehab project. We probably won't get all of that work done, um, this late summer and fall, just in terms of the calendar, but we'll have a completion date that'll continue into the next spring. And so we'll still get that work done. And that'll be in addition to more street rehab work that we'll do next year. Uh, we did get recent, uh, we were struggling a little bit of getting a performance on the residential, uh, uh, street rehab project that was awarded earlier this year. We've now since received contact by that contractor. Um, and they are now gearing up to do, uh, that work here, uh, starting in August. So we have all, all three street rehab projects that were originally scheduled are going to be, uh, proceeding forward, or at least the piece, the arterial one, uh, brought back to you for consideration, depending on the bids we receive. Overall, looking at the summary, uh, for, uh, that we've been showing, um, obviously in a much more positive position than where we started from in terms of the expected scenario, I've seen just mainly the loss in revenues, uh, in this last fiscal year related to hotel motel and a little bit of road use tax fund. Um, mostly in its hotel motel. And then, uh, going forward, again, it'll be key for us to be watching that hotel motel and sales tax number as the, the state does the reconciliation on sales tax that we'll talk about here in a minute. Following that is the, the actual cash flow documents. Again, the council will be very familiar with these from the budget process. Uh, in terms of how we're trending on our percent, uh, our fund balances. In terms of how we're trending on our percent, our fund balances, percent of expenditures and transfers out. Again, we're exceeding that 30% number now. In past years, when we exceeded that number, we talked to the Council about utilizing those excess of 30% resources or, or cash reserves for the flood-prone property buyout program. What I would advocate for your consideration this year is to not do such a transfer and to really protect our reserves with the unknowns that we're going to have here in the next year of what's the full economic impact of the pandemic, particularly on our general fund. One concern, I know I talked about it a little bit last time, is related to property tax revenue. So with the significant impacts, particularly on businesses and retail businesses from this pandemic, I'm a little leery in terms of what might happen in the future with commercial property tax valuations and how does that affect our tax base? I think residential values will remain very strong, and, and that's been reflected in the housing starts and the continued residential construction that we're seeing in our community, which is, which is great news. But I am a little leery about where our commercial values are going to go. So I would advocate for the Council at this point in time to protect those reserves until we know a whole lot more information. And then the Council can always make a decision either later in the fiscal year or next fiscal year to, if we are in excess of that 30% balance, to continue with a potential another phase of the flood-prone property buyout program. So that's something I would, wanted to kind of touch on here and get any feedback or comments from the Council on that recommendation.
Matt, that's a good recommendation, I think I would offer. And of course, we can discuss it more in strategic planning as well, but it just makes sense. Real uncertainties. I think it's been suggested that this, I think across the spectrum, that this is not the challenging year. It's going to be the next several years that are going to be very challenging from a budget perspective and from a revenue perspective. So I think the guidance to protect our reserves is, is good guidance. Council, other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think it's just common sense. We need to be very, very conservative at this point.
Yeah, I agree 100% with your recommendation.
Okay, Matt, does that conclude your report for us?
No, I just wanted to, real quickly, again, won't spend too much time on it, trust and agency cash flow, we talked about that earlier. And then the road use cash flow, which again is an important one, where we're able to, to be in a, in a good reserve position to continue to invest in kind of what Pete alluded to earlier and in our street infrastructure and, and protect that increase in resources that the Council approved of upwards of $3 million a year to put towards our street rehab program. We're exceeding $3 million this year, mainly due to the Clark Street project being included in there, being a significant project and trying to find ways to keep that average around $3 million going forward. And so with the road use tax fund being in a, in a strong position with some of the decisions that we made early on in the pandemic, it is a contributor to those street rehab projects. So really happy with at least the position that that fund will be in. And you'll notice we kind of have, at least in the budget year, a projection of a slight use of cash reserves. Again, that is also, we didn't really know when the timing with the way the census is going to happen this year with the census being delayed. When we see that new census population, as you can see in the future years, we, we expect a bump in revenue related to a new population number for the city. So we just didn't know when that was going to hit. So I wanted to make that mention. Any other questions on the financial update before I move into sales tax?
Council, questions? Go ahead, Matt.
All right. So what we want to do on a regular basis is, is, you know, being accountable and transparent to the, the city's taxpayers and their overwhelming approval of the local option sales tax on both the Dallas and Polk County sides of our community. We want to make sure on a regular basis and on our website and other ways that we're communicating how those dollars are being used. Again, as the Council will recall, those resolutions or those, that ballot language included a 50% of the funds to go towards property tax relief and 50% towards capital projects with the, the very specific ones related to the public safety facility, street rehab, green belt projects and stormwater improvements. And so what you see before here today is we're just trying to track for both the Dallas County and the Polk County revenue collections and where those funds have been going. On the property, I'll start on the property tax relief side for both, starting with Dallas County. As we've talked about with our new collaboration with the City of Urbendale with Station 43, which opened up back in March. And how, and as you saw in Chief's, Chief Rose's monthly update in your, earlier in your packet, we now have a, a report that we're including in there to show you the, the runs of that crew between Urbendale and Clive. So you can get a sense of the services that are now being provided in our community from Station 43. So to offset the, the property tax revenues that would have been needed to provide that financial support for the operation of that station, we are utilizing 50% of the revenues from Dallas County, local option sales tax to support that station, since that station is primarily serving the Dallas County portion of our community. On the Polk County side, the property tax relief is going towards the debt issuance and the capital outlays related to the public safety facility. As an, again, so basically the property tax relief portions on both sides of the city are going towards public safety. And then on the Dallas County side, the balance that is, is being used towards capital projects. The first capital project was Canary Park that you all were involved with the, the ribbon cutting and then the opening of that park late last year. And then this year, if you've been out off on Westgate Drive, you'll see a, a bridge and a bridge deck that's been poured of the new Westgate Bridge. And our, the newest, the Shadow Creek neighborhood of Clive is underway. And that capital portion of the Dallas County local option sales tax is funding support for that Westgate Bridge. And then depending on how the, how the sales tax revenues come in, we're looking at also next year that going to support an extension of the Greenbelt Trail where it currently ends today, just west of Alice's Road to that Westgate Bridge. So if you recall with the design of that bridge, we actually have a platform underneath the bridge. And it'll wrap up to the bridge deck because we have a trail on one side of the bridge and a sidewalk on the other side. So again, the focus has been that for the most part, we're trying to keep, even though we're not required by law, but we're trying to keep the, the revenues in the county, the respective counties. And, and I think it makes good sense in terms of how we laid things out in our capital improvements plan with that Dallas County revenue going for some projects in the growing part of our, the Dallas County portion of our community that is growing. On the Polk County side, where we have a lot of street rehab work happening, we estimate that the, the capital project portion of those revenues to go towards a street rehabilitation and street projects, which are mainly on the Polk County side of the community. Again, it's not required by law that we do that. It's just something that we're working from at this point, and that may have to, may change in the future depending on Council direction. So one thing I wanted to point out that you probably noticed in this spreadsheet, that's a little interesting, is this reconciliation that happens in November. So I've talked about this a little bit earlier in the year, related to sales tax. So at a certain point in the year, the state sends the city, from the Department of Revenue, they send us a statement and say, here's what we expect your revenues to be for sales tax. We're going to pay you based on this schedule. So it kind of gives almost a guarantee in a way that here's what you're going to get paid. And then in November, we're going to reconcile what, how the receipts actually came in for the previous fiscal year. So since more than likely, we're going to see some decline in sales tax from this previous fiscal year, you know, mainly March, April, May and June potentially for both Polk and Dallas County. The, the state will calculate that and they will let us know in November, hopefully a little earlier than that. But by November, we'll know what is the reconciliation. So if it's a negative number, that will affect our future payments on our local option sales tax. What you see here on the screen is in the past, on the Polk, on the Dallas County side, since that's been in place for about a year and a half, we actually collected more revenue than was anticipated. So the reconciliation actually increased our receipts. And then we had that additional revenue where we split that amongst the two projects that were allocated for property tax relief and then the Westgate Bridge. So what we're anticipating is more than likely in November, we'll probably have a negative number or, or maybe a level, maybe very little reconciliation in November. And that'll be good timing as we were talking about CIP to see how that affects our capital projects, particularly in 2021. So with a, if it is truly only 4% in terms of year-over-year decline in sales tax statewide or lo, our local option sales tax, that is very much a manageable number for us. If it was, you know, 10, 20%, well then, reduction, then obviously we would have some more, some tougher decisions to make in terms of reductions in capital. But at this point, at least remember, all the information we're seeing, that isn't the case. So as you can see at the bottom, then it, we total everything out between the two counties, and you can kind of see the actuals and the estimates for revenues received. So again, we wanted to provide this overview, see if there was any questions and ensure that we're doing this on a regular basis for, you know, accountability and transparency to Clive taxpayers. So with that, Your Honor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. A great information. I would request that we have this printed for each Council member and myself. So we have it for reference. It's not always easy to dive into the packets electronically. So I would ask that. Council, any other questions, comments from Matt at this point?
Good info, Matt. Thank you.
Okay, a very good counsel. Thank you. Matt, thank you. A great, great recap for us. All right, we're going to move to reports now. And Pete, I'm going to come down to your end of the dice. Start us off.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to give you all a heads up on some stories we'll be working on. We already talked about masks and the ongoing communications around public health and the COVID-19 pandemic. In addition to that, we've got some good finishing communications to do with our partners at Metro Waste on cart swaps. This week, the Metro Waste team has done an excellent job fielding any of those very few remaining issues that get reported by residents. And their team has quickly been taking that issue number on a daily basis as close as they can to zero. We did get a little flurry today at the end of the, the day as folks were getting home and looking at, we're expecting Thursday collections, but nothing like we've seen earlier. We said we might have some of that again on Friday. But all very manageable. We are down to the ones and twos at this point, not into the dozens or certainly any number higher than that. So we're coming to the end of that story. And as we've said before, we appreciate residents' patience and also look forward to working with Metro Waste to make sure that all their customer service needs are responded to promptly. And I'm real confident that that's where we're going to be as we go into the coming weeks. We are going to be sharing the information about the resident survey extensively because there's some great headlines there about how well the city is performing and the trust that residents have in their city. And then the lost data and some other information about how we're finishing up the fiscal year, especially with all the considerations around the ongoing economic disruption that we're feeling that everybody in, in the country and across the world is feeling right now. Those are some of the key stories we'll be focusing on for the rest of this month and, and heading into the beginning of August.
Thank you, Pete. Lots to talk about. Counsel, questions for Pete? Seeing none. Ted?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Eric?
Had a chance to tend to River coming last week, but nothing else at this point there.
Okay, thank you, Eric. John, anything for the good of the order?
Nothing to report.
Susan?
Well, I'd just like to thank John for sharing the Des Moines Register article from Sunday with the whole council. And tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock is when the North Raccoon Watershed Management Coalition will be meeting. I don't have an anticipation of what will happen, but Doug Olendike will be attending as my proxy with the ability to vote. So there will be no question that the vote is coming from the City of Clive since my employer has assisted with the plan. But I'll plan to participate in the meeting and potentially participate in some discussion.
Susan, thank you for that. This is really important. I think we'd all agree with that. And I, I'm grateful for the article. They, I think it puts in perspective kind of the timeline and the facts and, and the stakeholders. And I think our residents need to be aware of what's at stake here. So thanks for your participation and leadership here. I know there's a lot more to come. And hopefully cooler heads will prevail as we move forward in that regard. Anything else, Susan, for the good of the order?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I do not have anything tonight.
Thank you, Michael. Madam Counsel, anything for the good of the order?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, Matt, we're down to you.
All right, a few items tonight. First, I wanted to start off and have community development, have Amanda provide an update on a couple of things. First off, the board of adjustment case that was discussed at the previous meeting to give you an update on the action that are actually lack of action of just moving, just not reconsidering, I guess, the, the action related to the pool earlier this week. So I want to get Amanda speak a little bit to that. And then also provide an update on staff's work related to the District One Neighborhood Plan. Amanda?
Thank you. Yes, so as Matt said, the Board of Adjustment did determine that they did not want to reopen the variance case for the pool in the tertiary front yard on the Sheridan property. We did, staff took opportunity, put that back on their agenda after your remand. We put that information out to the neighbors, asked them to provide additional input. The board received that in their packet and then some that came in after packet went out as well that was forwarded on to them. They reviewed that information and determined that it wasn't any new facts that were presented. It was the same items that they had hashed out and spent quite a bit of time at their meeting, the previous meeting discussing. So there was no motion to reopen that case. So with that, their approval of the variance stands. And the applicant, those homeowners, will be able to move forward with coming in and getting their permit to start constructing the swimming pool and the fence, of course, that they could have struck, constructed without the variance.
Questions of Amanda on that, Counsel? Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. And then I'll just launch right into the District One. I want to thank Matt for letting me have a little bit of his time here. We just wanted to get your guys feeling on kind of what our next steps on that project are. So what we've been doing since the contract was signed in March, just shortly before City Hall had to close with COVID and the pandemic stuff, we have been working kind of behind the scenes with HKGI and Civic Brand, our consultants. And we've, we've worked through those background reports, the GIS data. They've built the project website that's almost ready to be publicly available. So we've done a lot of that background work that we could do. And we are really to the point now where we have to start putting together that advisory committee and starting public engagement if we are going to kind of launch the project and really get into the thick of it. So what we're hoping for tonight is to have Counsel give us direction. If you want us to proceed, recognizing that that public engagement isn't going to be typical. It's not necessarily going to be what we had expected when we initially were approving this plan and the, the contract and kind of getting that initial schedule set. It might require the project timeline to be extended. And since it'll be kind of experimental with some of that engagement, if we don't get out of it what we need, it might end up needing some budget adjustments as well moving forward. So we're kind of in unknown territory and we've been talking with HKGI and Civic Brand and doing some of our own staff research into a variety of options. So there are a lot of public engagement opportunities that don't necessarily look like your traditional public meeting or your traditional design charrette where you get a bunch of people together. So I can go into that a little bit. If you guys want some of the examples we've kind of thrown around, we have not yet set HKGI loose on updating that schedule and coming up with that engagement plan. We wanted to get your feelings first. If you were comfortable taking more of the experimental path. We're not the only city, obviously, that's up against this. Everyone who has a planning process going on right now is facing the same challenges. So if you wanted us to push ahead and do the best we can under the circumstances and really get creative with some of these engagement opportunities, or if you want us to just put the project on hold and wait until things are more settled and we kind of know what's going on. We are getting to the time right now, September, October, is kind of a good time to do public engagement. You don't have all the summer vacations, but you're not yet into the holidays yet. So we're kind of at that point of the year where we have to make a decision if we're going to pull the trigger on, on assembling that advisory committee and moving forward. So that would be my first ask of you guys is to So that would be my first ask of you guys is to give us an indication if you want us to proceed with that.
Well, Amanda, I'll start, and I'm sure there's plenty of commentary, but I'm really interested in what you think. What direction do you think we should go?
Sure. So I teeter back and forth. As you all know, I've had my own challenges with COVID. So I'm very sensitive to that. I do think there are a lot of opportunities for the engagement. There are certainly things, I don't, I personally don't think just a large public meeting is that great of an environment to get real input from people. So I think this kind of puts us into a forced position to be creative and really embrace that we are, you know, a digital world and we have people working all sorts of different shifts. It's not a normal nine-to-five. So some of those alternative ways we can get into the community, you know, really reaching out to places like Clive Community Services to help spread information, the school to help us out, some of the local businesses that residents might frequent. But then also looking at, you know, what are some of those options that don't require any person-to-person, direct contact with people? So, you know, we could put up large signs people can write on at Lanaien Park, and they can sketch, and they can write comments. And, you know, there's options like that out there that I think places we're using before the pandemic. And it gives us an opportunity to kind of force us to have to embrace those alternatives that, you know, our modern world might actually be more inclined to get participation with, since it's not such a set time. I can't promise that we'll get as much engagement as we hope, but I think you do eventually have to move forward. And since we don't know how long this pandemic and restrictions are going to continue, there is, you know, the need to try to keep moving and keep improving the community in the ways that we can.
So you think you can do it?
I think we can do it. I think especially with Civic Brand on the team, they are public engagement. That is, that is their wheelhouse. That's what they bring to the table. So I think with their team on board, they'll have that creativity, and they will be excited to embrace some of those alternatives, as long as you're willing to give us more money if we need it.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, questions for Amanda?
Mr. Mayor, I guess.
Go ahead, John.
I guess my concern, particularly in District One, is the demographics and the ability to get that level of involvement. I think what you were talking about, when you're not talking about in-person, probably relies on online or other means of reaching those folks. And that is probably the area of Clive which has the most difficult access to that, the language barriers and other things that compounded with distraction and dealing with COVID-19. I think it would present considerable challenges in getting the level of feedback that we're used to having for a project this important. So I'd be, I'm a little concerned about the ability to get that done.
Very good feedback. Susan?
Well, I'd just like to say that I think it's worked really well to continue with the retail nodes conversation. And it may well be involving a different demographic, but we've had good responses to the survey questions that went out. The remote meetings of the advisory committee have been going well. And one thing I'd mention is, as the schools have had to adapt to more of an online education process, we've seen some ramped-up usage of various opportunities for that. So I think it is worth giving it a shot based on what I've been seeing.
Okay, thank you, Susan. Other council members?
I mean, I think John brings up certainly a great point. But I do think we need to move forward and, you know, we're all in a new normal. The amount of time that we would delay would be indefinite, right? We don't know when this is going to end. So I think we just need to use the tools that we have, do the best we can, and just adapt and improvise as needed. And I think Amanda and her, you know, team can do that. So I'd be inclined to move forward.
You know, I'd be inclined to move forward as well. Look, everybody as far as business and a lot of different industries, we had to use out-of-the-box thinking right there, and certainly digital areas, things of that nature. So we just don't know when this is going to, I think if we keep delaying, we just don't know when the stop is going to be. So I'd say we responsibly move forward and utilize that out-of-the-box thinking.
Good. Thank you, Eric. Mike, why don't you weigh in?
Yeah, I am drawn. I agree with John. I also agree. I mean, I do agree with everybody. I do think we need to keep moving. I think there are some unique hurdles that will have to be overcome. I like what Amanda says about, you know, these boards and other things. Lanaien Park needs to be utilized with the message. It can't be just digital, where it's not those retail nodes, it's not those business owners. These are, that area is, you know, drive-by any night, even tonight. I know nobody wants to hear this, but there's hundreds of people out there playing volleyball and other stuff, or it's a form of volleyball and soccer. And they have got to be engaged as well as the retail and the others. So it's got to be more than digital. It has to be creative. And I like those boards and such. But we've got to place these around neighborhoods, these boards and messages. It cannot just go to a digital side of it.
Well, Amanda, I think that, I think you've heard from the council, and I think the general consensus is to move forward.
Okay, great.
Be creative. I don't think we're ever going to want to stifle your creativity. So, you know, carry forward, be creative. You know, and if you need help or other guidance, come back to us. But I think that we're always going to be open to moving ahead and doing it the right way. And so hopefully that gives you the guidance you need for now. And let's, please keep us regularly informed.
Yep, I have just a couple little tiny things left. One, I'd like to take a second and just address John and Michael's concerns. Those things you mentioned, the language barriers, internet connectivity, those are like the first two things we talked about with HKGI, even before we really got into all the pandemic stuff. So we're definitely very sensitive to that. And that's always been kind of a driver behind what we've talked about with the public engagement. So we are working on those options and not just digitally, of course. But, you know, what options do we have for those posters or signs to have the translation into different languages? I know we've worked with the school district on getting some translation for another messaging. And they'd recommended five languages to have things translated into. So we've had those conversations with HKGI and Civic Brand. So that'll definitely be one of the things that's on the forefront of our minds as we're making that engagement plan. So then what our next steps are going to be, we'll say HKGI loose on updating that schedule and working out that engagement plan. Part of that engagement plan will, of course, be forming the advisory committee. So we would like to send out a letter or postcard or something that we're still working on with them, with the consultants, to send it to every property owner, business owner, tenant, renter, every address within that District One, to get that to their homes so they at least start to have awareness of the project. And part of that will be to solicit advisory committee members. And then forming, if you may recall from previous conversations, we were going to have a project management team that was more of our technical side to keep our advisory committee more manageable in size. So that will have our planning and zoning rep, our parks board, our public works people that we can pull into engagement and communications as needed, rather than having a 25-person advisory committee with all those technical people that, you know, don't necessarily have any expertise to lend on large portions of the project. But maybe like Parks really needs to be involved with the Lanaien Park discussion. So some of those kinds of things. So one other thing we would ask tonight is if there is anyone who would like to volunteer to be the council liaison on the advisory committee?
Well, that's a great question. Council members?
I can do it.
All right.
Eric, thanks for stepping forward. I'm also going to appeal with a grin on my face to the two council members that live in the district.
Yeah, yeah, I like all the motions and seconds. I was about to do it before Eric jumped in, so.
Good. Michael, glad to hear you're on board. John?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing.
Excellent. Well, there you go, Amanda.
All right, perfect. We'll definitely keep you all informed as we're moving forward. And we'll start working with HKGI on getting the ball rolling again and start that public engagement and get people excited, hopefully.
Great. We look forward to learning of your progress. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Anything else? We got it covered?
I think that's it. Close yet questions.
Any other questions for Amanda, counsel? Hearing none? Matt?
Yeah, Your Honor, a few more items. Wanted to make the council aware that we're really close to locking down dates on the mayor's cleanup here late summer, fall with Waste Management, who was originally going to do it under the previous contract back in May. They are committed, hopefully, we're going to get them locked in and committed to doing it. But we are going to have a mayor's cleanup here this fall. And then we will get back on the regular schedule next spring with our current, our new provider, ASI. So that, I don't want to put the date out there quite yet until we have it locked down, because I know what that'll turn into. So we, but it will be happening. So that is one thing I wanted to make sure the council was aware of. Also, earlier this week, the design consultant, SVPA, our owners rep Angie and myself, interviewed three construction managing firms. We received seven proposals for our construction management as agent for the public safety facility. Had really good firms that we interviewed, had two that were really very close to one another, both in kind of the mid-range of fees, so it was definitely within budget. And we are recommending and starting contract negotiations to work with DCI Group as our construction manager for our project. DCI is pretty much the construction manager as agent leader in the metro area, and particularly with government projects, doing projects for the state of Iowa. They're currently doing, they've done a lot of public safety work here recently, currently working on the Warren County Justice Center in Indianola, and then also the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy and EMS fire facility in Panora. And you may also know of when Principal did their substantial remodel downtown, DCI was actually the construction manager on that project. So very, very experienced group, local, local team here from Des Moines. Again, we had a really close second, but with their CMA experience, they just really kind of pushed to the top. And so we will be providing that contract for your consideration at your next meeting. And then Ready's starting to work on getting their review of construction documents and getting things ready to go in the bidding process here. Or to start building a public safety facility here, starting this fall. On the agenda earlier tonight, you approved a number of easements related to the project. So that was the, really one of the final hurdles of getting things moving forward. We anticipate we'll likely be doing some kind of update to the neighborhood once we start to have some bid packages out on the street and we have an idea on construction schedule and make sure we're communicating with the neighborhood. But good progress happening, and you will see more of that here in the coming meetings. Also, wanted to mention as a follow-up to our last meeting, when Jeff Carter spoke related to the stream bank, stream corridor assessment that was done. Just this morning, staff was on-site behind his home meeting with him to come up with maybe some ideas of the issue that he brought up and how can we get creative related to a property owner willing to invest? So we had staff out there working with him and looking at the bank of trees that he was referring to. And we're going to start to generate some ideas there of what maybe a pilot project looks like. So more to come on that, but just wanted to follow back up with the council that there's some work being done there. And then lastly, as we get into the month of August, obviously strategic planning ramps up. You have your interviews with Lyle here about a week from tomorrow. Wanted to offer that he is willing to do those via Zoom if you're interested. If you kind of want to have a visual face-to-face digitally, I can easily set that up for you. So please let me know on that. I know Ted's already signed up for that, and if others want to do that, we can easily set that up. He is more than willing to do that. And also just kind of getting the thought process around potentially doing the entire strategic planning workshops via Zoom. Just knowing where we're at, where the pandemic is headed here, just at least in the short term, the potential of doing that. He has been doing that with, as I mentioned, I think in my email last week, doing that with other clients like Waqee. I think he's planning on doing it with Grimes. Some of it is the question of whether or not he could even travel here for those workshops. So just again, I think we could come up with a process to make that work with both the executive team, the staff team involved, as well as the council meetings, the council groups. But just wanted to kind of put that out there, see if there was, I know I've talked to some of you about it already, but just wanted to get any feedback on that related both to the phone interviews or your one-on-one interviews, and then also the workshops here in later August.
Counsel, feedback from Matt on the question?
Yeah, I'd be great. It'd be great to do Zoom for both.
And Matt, I'll just, I'll reiterate, I know you and I talked about it, but I'll just, for the record, indicate that I'm in favor of Zoom meetings as well for both. Commentary or thoughts from anybody else on that topic?
I've already, go ahead, Susan, sorry. Yeah, I've already given Matt my thoughts. I prefer to do it in person and just have Lyle Zoom in. But if that's not possible, then, you know, I'm certainly willing to do it via Zoom. I just don't think it's quite as effective, but.
Yeah, understood.
It's part of my thoughts as well. I'm sort of glad to do the interview with Lyle on Zoom. Lyle wanted to zoom in, but I think you really lose a lot of the interaction. You know, via Zoom, if we did the strategic planning via Zoom, I think we used appropriate social distancing, wore masks, and were generally responsible to it. I just think we get a lot more out of it from a group than go to the Zoom room.
Susan, you had raised your hand as well?
I was just saying, I strongly agree with Zoom for both. I think that by the time we have all of the elected officials and staff in the room, it's probably too many to be in an enclosed space instead of outside. So I think it's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor, let me suggest that maybe we look at a hybrid situation. If some on the council are comfortable getting together, perhaps in the chambers or whatever area would work best, that they could do that and others could zoom in.
Yeah, I suggested that as well. And I think the catch point is, I think we would all prefer to be together and do it in person, just because it is more effective. And there will be some level of sacrifice that night with an altered approach. But unfortunately, we're going to need to do something, whether it's a hybrid or whether it's complete Zoom. So I'm going to ask you to get with Matt on your preferences. I think we've talked openly here about the possibilities. So I'm sure we can work that out in the short order.
Yeah, and to that point, Your Honor, you know, I think it's something similar to what we even did for the last council meeting. That is something we could easily do. If there's a, if there's a few would like to prefer to be in person, we can be in the council chambers. We would basically run this like a Zoom room, Zoom meeting, just like Pete's running right now in the council chambers and just, and have people on the screen, video, just like we did the last council meeting. So I definitely think there is a, there's a middle ground here that we can find for those that prefer in-person, where we don't necessarily exceed, you know, maximum of indoor gatherings and then have that virtual experience as well. So no, happy to, happy to work on that. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Other questions of Matt's, counsel?
Matt, can we just get a real quick update on Clark Street?
Sure. Actually, I think Jim Hagley's still on, so I'll let you, I'll let you get it from the project manager himself. So Jim, do you want to provide a quick update for the council?
Sure. We're looking at, we are now out of the ground with the underground utilities, so that's a big step. Obviously, you know, we initially told folks six to eight weeks, checking the schedule. Tomorrow will be the end of Week 14. So we have learned some things on the way. It's been a while since we've done a project like this. Happy with the contractor's attendance, if you will. He has not been absent. He's been out there working around a lot of U. He's been out there working around a lot of utilities. We are hopeful next week or the plan for next week is to get the rock sub base down in advance of paving. There's a chance that they would be paving a week from tomorrow, the main line there. Schedule that I pushed out revised has reopening the intersection mid-August. We'll need a couple of weeks to do the drives and sidewalks and intersections after we get the main line done. And then that'll be a big step, getting that intersection open, helping with some circulation there for the neighbors. We will have a little stretch there up to University to get done. Hopefully by Labor Day, we may have that full stretch of 104 reopened. I got to, you know, always talk about weather and other unforeseen things that may delay that a little bit. From there, we'll be moving on to the section west of Clark Street. We are committed to getting that third stage completed yet this year.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jim. It's a big project, so a lot of work to be done. Other questions for Matt or for staff, Counsel? Okay, Matthew, any other correspondence?
There is nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, Matthew. Seeing nothing further, I'm going to adjourn us at 7:51, please. Thanks, everybody.